So we're gonna do this as kind of like a work food session so we could work on our part.
That's so nice, thanks for that.
Well, it was all for you, Carrie.
Yes.
Because you always, you never get food and you just look like you're wasting away the nothing. So anyways, there's a couple of quick things we just wanna go over and then we're gonna get into the honoring the culture. And Matt and Tammy worked really hard and got us some stuff that's really gonna be helpful, I think, and really help move us forward. So the first thing is, is that we have a mission, we have a vision. And one of the things they talked about is, you know, whenever you make a decision, you should think about your mission, you should think about your vision. And I don't remember if it was the West River Group or at some meeting in Berry or Most Peculiar, they were talking, "When you make decisions on this new district, you should look at it through the eyes of like if you were a student and you were one of the children in the school." So I asked Bill to look into getting us some banners or some bigger, print up some bigger pieces of paper that we could put, you know, the mission and the vision and then once we get the goals, if we think that's appropriate, so that, and have a set for each building so that when we're meeting, you know, we can maybe have them up there so as we're having discussions, that that kind of is always in our face. So Bill went one better and he found out about banners through whatever site somewhere. And for 150, uh, I think it'll be 168 dollars. For all four? Yeah. So we can get the two, you know, two sets of banners and it would show, they would be up on the wall so we would always be able to see it. And Tammy, did we, I think we talked a little bit last time, you said you could find a space in the library, right, where, in your building for a couple banners?
Definitely.
And Matt said he could here, so we're not intruding on the term stuff, but I think it'd be real good. So, um, but the only thing is, is I said before, I just authorized it or before Rick and I say yes, it's really too, I just wanna make sure that the board was, was happy with that. And because we're not having an official kind of meeting, we'll confirm it, but at least Bill can get them ordered. So, any, anybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't you go ahead, Bill? I like the, the River Valley, you know, that it's right up there, so I think that'd be really cool. So that's number one. Number two, I asked Bill to just because at Wyndham Central, and I don't, I think, were you at the Wyndham Central meeting?
No.
I don't think anybody else was. Carrie, you didn't go to that one either. Um, one of the things that came up is Wyndham was rather upset about the, um, the overage of the study group because what happened was they decided to just have, um, the West River Group originally just decided that each school would pay a fifth of it, or their share of it, 20 percent, there's five schools. Um, and for them, when you looked at it per pupil, it was, it was a couple thousand dollars, wasn't it, Bill, like 2,800 bucks?
Uh, I think 2,600, yeah.
Yeah. So they just said, "How about if we do it by, based on AVM?" And we had agreed as a study group, Dwight, when you and I were on it, and I think in the beginning of this group, we kinda said, you know, Marlborough really didn't participate, move forward, so we thought we could cover that overage with our grant money for the new grant, but then we found out that we couldn't, that it, we actually have to pay that of our budget. So we, um, and Marlborough said they were fine with paying for it because they used a lot of information when they did their, um, when they, they made their request to the state, so they thought it was well worth it. So they didn't amend the motion at the Wyndham Central meeting Marlborough did to make everybody pay by AVM. So that carried pretty unanimously, Bill, I think there's only a few objections.
Uh, I think it was just two, yes.
Yeah, so, um, one of the things that, because that, one of the comments made during their Wyndham's presentation was, you know, they didn't realize they were going over and, and they thought it was pretty poor that they did, dah 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 dah. We all knew we were going over because we didn't know what was going on exactly, so, um, pass, pass around. Two, three, four, five, two, two, five. So, um, so we, I asked Bill just to give us a counting of where we stand. And I think once a month, um, when Bill comes to the meeting, we should just kind of look at the numbers and make sure, because like the food will be paid for. Um, I don't know if other people over there want it. We've got one of these if anybody wants it. Um, so I just thought it'd be good just to have Bill, um, keep up with us on where we stand with the expenditures so that we make sure we don't get too out of hand. Cause remember, we also, if we, on contracts, uh, on the contract, we may have to hire an attorney to work with us on that. Attorneys are 300 bucks an hour, you know, and every, we won't say anything nasty about attorneys because we got one sitting at the table. And I think it's 300 bucks an hour we get charged, don't we, Bill?
That depends on the attorney.
Well, that's where we're getting charged, I thought, during the study.
Uh, that was for, um, the, uh, the Act 46 Implementation Project.
Okay. Um, so anyways, there's, so there's just a breakdown and I thought once a month we oughta just, you know, like we all look at our school budgets and try to stay, you know, in the school budget. Of course, one of the other things is that, you know, come July 1st, 2019, whatever money we all have just goes into one big pot and gets some, gets stirred up, so. Is there any questions on the budget or where we stand?
So this meeting is to really last through up to July 2019.
Yeah, technically.
Before.
Good. Now, if we overspend it, what happens is we have to make it up, the two schools. So it, it's just like any other budget. If, if you, you're voted a budget, but if 20 new kids move in and they're all tuition and it destroys our budget, we, we have to spend it, we can't say no, we can't say, "You can't move to town because you don't, you don't have, you don't have the money to pay for your children," but, um, so you make it up the following year. Just like if 10 kids move out and we counted them for tuition, we have all that extra money, you know, we just keep it. So everybody's good with that, with the budget, any other questions? Okay. The other thing is, um, Anita got a bunch of stuff out for us. I don't know if you have the updates.
Yes, I have a mini report. Um, um, the Bucketville News that we discussed at that early meeting in early April, in the issue that comes out next week, they're gonna print a double-page spread which has a mini version of the survey. So on one page will be questions, ones through whatever, with just mini answers. And then the next page will be all the questions that people ask with the answers. So that will be complete since you all felt it was pretty strongly that questions be answered, so that'll be in the next issue of the Bucketville News. Um, and that was for, uh, we, we paid them, you, you paid them to do that. The other mini announcement is that they agreed to give me a column in every issue, so without having to ask for it, they're just gonna assign me that space and that won't be a charge for that. So every month I'll be able to write one full column in the Bucketville News. And I know those of you who are not familiar with the newsletter probably think it doesn't amount to much, but seriously, this is all the news we get in Ward'sboro.
Yeah, that's my favorite.
So it does have a lot of value. You don't see a lot of these in the trash at the post office or the general store. When they put a stack of them on the counter in the general store, they're gone in a couple of hours. So, um, it is kind of an important favor. Lauren gets a huge round of applause for keeping the other end of the valley updated. Um, uh, she's really doing half my rest.
That's why we fed her too.
And I have to, probably have to take her out to dinner or something when this is all over. So thank you very much for your participation. Uh, there's been no, nothing incoming on the email as far as people wanting to sign up or people asking questions. And we're just gonna all have to make a campaign to start pushing that by the, be well before the next whole budget vote thing. Um, and, um, I've been, the blog is totally updated, videos, minutes and all of that, so that's totally updated. One thing I have, I've been looking forward, way long-range vision toward, a little private consultation with Mark here, my IT guru, about where you wanna be online come July. Uh, two websites for two schools, one website for one school, three websites for three boards, Facebook, whatever, so that's way down the road and you have plenty of time to think about and discuss that. But I just wanted you to know that I've already been thinking about it and making diagrams.
But I think that's a pretty easy answer. You're still gonna need the two webpage sites for the individual schools because they're still operating, individual schools from July 1 through 2/30 of 2019, and we still need the River Valley, so I see.
But I meant July 19, not July 8.
Yeah, so in July of 19, I think then there is no more Dover School and there is no more Ward'sboro School. So it's the River Valley, so I think then, you know, then we can have a discussion later.
Yeah, we're way in advance of that moment. Hank, questions remaining, any stuff?
Is everybody good?
Yeah, great.
Yeah, so one thing that I could use a little direction for from the board is what you want me to emphasize in my monthly column in the Bucketville News? So if you have a particular message that you feel you wanna push, whether it comes from you all or it comes from the principals or it comes from Bill, just let me know and that's the slant, I'll put on the article that I write every month and the deadline is the 10th of every month.
Everybody good?
Yes, you'll need to know after this meeting what to.
Kind of where you want.
Well, I, I think we're gonna have some good stuff come up at this meeting, so I'm hoping that the things we talked about, which are the, the, um, are the two big topics we wanna discuss tonight is the honoring the culture and, um, when people, we asked the question on the survey, question number three, the board was each supposed to pick their five options they liked the most just to see what commonalities there were. So I think that'll be, be something good to have in there.
Okay.
Also, I hate having my back to people, we gotta figure out a better. Yeah, I don't know what to do. I didn't know if we brought everybody, if we added a table and brought everybody in, but everybody's okay, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that way you guys can eat in the corner and visit. I would be sitting in the other chair though, it looks much more comfortable. Um, so one of the things is, remember on the survey, we had the question, I'm sorry, Dwight, any update on the building?
Only that, um, what's the 30th of, uh, is the, next Monday is Ward'sboro and the following Monday is Dover.
Oh, I have, I have next Monday is Dover.
Did I get that right?
I thought we were, I thought Maddick was on the 30th.
Let's look it up. I thought, I'm going from memory here, so I'm sorry. But another two Mondays in a row, I thought Ward'sboro was first, but I could be wrong.
I've got Dover on the 30th.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dover, then Ward'sboro, is that right?
Ward'sboro's the 7th.
Yeah, sorry, I got it wrong. Yes, sorry.
Are you gonna come meet up here?
Yeah, I can.
And then Matt and Watt, make sure that Dave and.
Yeah, right, so they.
Yeah, and I got it written down, so.
Yeah, we contacted the school, hopefully they have some plans available, I don't know if you're, you're gonna have to do that and.
Yes, I am.
Good, and then have someone else who knows the building well. Okay, yeah, great.
Thank you, Dwight.
Is this a media event? Do you need any minute to come and take a picture?
No, I don't think so. No, no, no.
Well, this is the, we hired a, a, do a reserve study to kind of look at the buildings and give us how much we should be putting away every year.
I just wondered if that was news.
No, I hope not.
Let's hope not, right?
I think that's kind of all the things we need to cover. I don't think there's anything else that was kind of hanging. Um, and we did have an executive session earlier, but we didn't, we only, we had half, we didn't have a majority, so it was just a conversation, a work session kind of conversation. And Bill will have a report for us at our next meeting on that. Um, so the next thing is, we had the question in question three, and I forget exactly how it was worded, Carrie, do you remember off the top of your head some?
Uh, no, I, I pulled up from what was in, uh, question four, was successful transition with the.
I'm sorry, question four, yeah.
Okay.
I, I was wrong. So everybody was supposed to respond. I told Bill I wasn't gonna respond because I don't usually on these things, but we did get, most everybody did their homework, so here are the responses. And I don't think you have these, Matt, do you want?
I don't think I have those electronic, did you send those to me, Bill?
It's online if you're hooked up.
Bill, Bill, we split the top five from the board?
Oh, no, I don't have that.
Okay, so we'll pass some of those around. And basically, what does a successful transition look like? So two board members thought happy and thriving kids. Um, four board members came up with equality, equity, more opportunity. Um, question three had one board member, happy, successful students and parents. Um, one and in which each school has an equitable share in the education, dah 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 dah. We got two. Question five, not losing control and develop the best school we can without out-of-town politics interfering, so I don't know if that means exactly what that means. Um, one where neither school's pulled down by this merger.
Okay, you can add one to that. I just got Dwight.
Dwight sent, is that a while ago?
No.
Oh. It's been about an hour.
So that was, that was the biggest one we've had.
So you can add one there.
When he was supposed to be at that other meeting?
I've got, I've got Dwight.
Oh, I was, oh, I'm getting a lot of misinformation.
It turned me off when I saw Rick's answer, so I've got, I was like, "Oh gosh, I gotta do homework to do."
No, we weren't, yeah.
And then when you responded, I'm like, "Okay, I'm not sure how to respond," so I didn't.
Yeah, all we were supposed to do was take the top five responses and tell which were our five top responses.
Right, did that.
So Rick kinda did it and he just, he added some.
But I added a whole.
He added some interesting topics.
I thought we had you explain it.
Well, I was.
You were deep. Take a wrong. Extra credit, extra credit.
I enjoyed it, yeah. He was, he was excelled in school.
That's right. Extra credit.
I tell you, that's why, you know, he was like, he graduated top of the class.
That's right.
I was way down here. So question seven, preserving the heritage, got three responses. Question eight, improvement in both schools, maximizing the cost savings, there was only one. Question nine, meaning bigger turnout for both schools, um, to have open discussion was one. Taxpayers, question 10, got three.
Add another one, that's another Dwight.
Yeah. Yeah, Dwight.
Yeah, thank you.
Question 11 got one, which is see students say what they want. Question 12, test, I tell you, I wish we had more say when I was in school. School would've been a whole lot different right there.
In a good way, right?
Yeah, in a great way for me. Question 12, test scores increasing, there was two responses. Question three, 13 informed parent staff and townspeople, um, two responses to that and then question 14, keep the IB program.
Dwight had that one too.
Oh, so there's two there.
And then Dwight has two new ones.
Yeah.
Um, I think not trying to change too much at either school too quickly until the new district board gets settled in and realizing cost savings while expanding, equalizing educational offerings for both schools. And where it does not matter what school you choose, you are guaranteed to receive an outstanding education.
So if I go back to my totals, it looks as though question number six was one where neither school's pulled down by this merger and cooperation, trust, and develops, got five responses, that was the big winner to me. The second big one is equality, equity, more opportunities with four. And question 10, taxpayers see value, towns, parents feel fortunate for their students being in the district, students are proud, and, um, strong support for educators. So I think we're gonna go with those three as our top.
Could you go over that again with question six, question 10?
Question six, question two, and question 10.
Question two, thank you.
So those are the big three. So let's keep them in mind. The next thing we asked to have done is, we asked, we had a long discussion, I have it written down here, what does honoring the culture mean? And somebody looked it up online and somebody looked it up on their cellphone, on a foot phone like this. And, um, we asked Tammy and Matt to come up with, to kind of pull the staff and whatever, students and parents and to kind of come up with what they came up to. So I have them here, I'm gonna pass them out, a few out, but Matt's got them so we can look at them on the big screen, but I think you're gonna find this really interesting also. So I get a preview to this. Can anybody see that okay?
Thank you.
Do Ward'sboro first?
Sure.
Tammy, you wanna present these or just, I was just gonna read through them, would you like to? Okay, so school tradition, celebrations, including school meeting, field trip, winter carnival, spirit day, memorial day, Thanksgiving Day, feast, read-a-thon, author tease, et cetera. Additional programming specials like RPE, library, music, forewinds, starbase, winter sports, camp Kuwaiten, laughter, Tigers, instrumental music, district fan. Three, are these in an order or are these just the 10?
They are not in.
Okay. Community, parent involvement, strong school club, cultivating the community. Four, positive learning environment with high expectations. Five, PBIS, program roars, all-school celebration, paws. Um, PBIS, do you want? What is that?
Sure, it's the Positive Behavior.
Right, that's, okay. Cause that's more curriculum thing and the, the roars and the paws and stuff, is that curriculum or is that just like, more like the laughter?
It's part of the PBIS program.
Okay.
Specific to our school though.
Okay. High-quality staffing, teaching, administration, paraprofessionals who build relationship with students. Seven, a school mascot. Eight, small class sizes and student-to-teacher ratios. Nine, teacher and staff collaboration. And 10, technology integration. So especially when the Bucketville News is, is not anywhere in there, so we better work on that and get that on there.
Hey, Rich, can I ask acronyms? What is Tigers, Starbase, and Paws and Roars?
Sure, I can answer those questions. So Tigers was a program that the kids attended, it was an equaling program.
Is that they went through?
Yeah, okay. Starbase is a, uh, it's a hands-on science program that the fourth graders attend up in Rutland each year. They go up for about five, five, or five days out of the year and there's all sorts of things like robotics, uh, programming, it's all science and hands-on stuff, it's really great. Uh, Paws is, again, part of the PBIS program, uh, kids earn Paws or.
And then they like.
Yes, got it, so it's our reward system.
Thank you. And Wes, W E S?
Wes is our, um.
Ward'sboro Elementary School.
It's our mascot.
Wes is our, we call Wes our mascot, that's his name, it's like a panther.
Wes the panther.
His name is Wes.
Okay.
Everybody good with that? Any questions? Poor guy on TV can't see it. Let's hit Dover. Dover 10 things. Contribute to develop, oh, Matt, you wanna read it?
Oh, go ahead, you're doing great.
Contribute to develop, I was hoping you wanted to read it. Contribute to develop and maintain a rigorous and diverse academic program including small class size, highly-trained staff, offering high-quality instruction in a fun way. Does that sound familiar or something I just read? Does that not kind of like meet with, um, I think that kind of falls under.
A lot of them together.
Pardon?
There's a couple of them together.
Yeah. Um, continue the IB program, that kind of sounds not, although it's not specific to IB, but it sounds like PBIS, continue that program. Positive school climate, school pride, safe welcome, warm, nurturing environment. I think I saw that up above somewhere. Positive learning environment with high expectations. Um, strong art and music program including morning sing. I didn't see a morning sing with you guys, but I saw something about like an all-school.
District band.
Yeah, the district band, oh, all-school meeting. Um, community involvement, school club, community meals, et cetera. I think Thanksgiving Day Feast, you know, winter carnival, um, read-a-thon, author tease. Diverse program with specials including library, technology, RPE, health, Spanish, circus, artists, residents. Kuwaiten, Dover Free and its strong after-school program. Do you guys do anything with your library in town? Do you guys trip there or?
We, yeah, it's convenient because the park is right there, so we do opt to go over and, and work with our library and Jill.
So another, you know, there's some more tying, Jill served on the study committee. Um, seven, the ski program, I know I saw that above. Um, eight, the school name and identity, school spirit, I saw that above with Wes. Um, pleasant, clean, safe school building, I think that was kind of implied in several of the ones above. And field research through high-quality field trips, I think, um, you know, that kind of falls in some, I think some of the specials and traditions and I know you guys mentioned Kuwaiten, which is kind of a field trip. So one of the things I thought that was really cool is we were all worried about this, you know, what does honoring the culture mean? And if this is a culture, I bet you we could probably say that they're almost identical with just some different acronyms and, um, you know, a few little things for, you know, Wes the panther versus, I don't even know, one time was it Dover ducks? Is it the Bulldogs now? It'll change. So anyways, anybody have any takeaway from, from all that?
Not so different.
Yeah. Which I think we kind of knew and that's one of the reasons why I think that the idea of a merger wasn't as, as difficult for us as it maybe was for like Marlborough because there was some, some real changes there just in, in the, in the structure. So from all the meetings we've had and all the discussions we've had, including the, including the, um, the study committee and the study group that was done through Wyndham Central before we, we broke into our individual study groups, I broke down, I came up with kind of like five big items, I think, that, that we've kind of had discussions about and been talking about. I just wanna throw them out there, um, and see if I, if with, if we were to take the honoring the culture with the 10 things from each school and give that to our superintendent, give them our top three of, you know, what a, what a good merger looks like. And these five topics, is this enough to give to our administrator to move forward with designing a school for us? So one of the things that's been very, and I think fits into all the different things we looked at, including the honoring the culture, including the top, top five questions, is the building, the physical plans. And I think we're all in agreement that we, there's gonna be a school building in each town. Um, and I think we, although we have a little bit different grade structure, I think we should leave that open to not tie the hands of the administration because one of the things is we can't do single grades in Ward'sboro because there's just not enough room. And do we wanna allow him a little flexibility in how the classrooms are designed in the buildings because that kind of goes back to honoring, um, honoring the culture, but it also has to do with class sizes, which we talked about, and it has to do with Karen's staff and dedicated staff. So I think the only guardrail, the big item there is, is, you know, that there will be a building in both, in, um, in both towns. So if Mr. Anton was to come back with us saying that, "I'm proposing to close the Ward'sboro School and Dover School and we build a mega school on the town line," so half of it's in each town, I think we would probably kind of say, "That's not what we're looking for." Would everybody be in agreement with that?
Yes.
Is there anything else with the building that you can think of or the buildings or having a building in each town that would be specific that we wanna throw out there?
For planning for an academic proof.
Yeah, for Bill to plan an academic structure.
I mean, I don't know if the transportation about, if there was.
We're gonna have transportation as a separate kind of group, so I, I just, cause I think that's a pretty big topic.
The only thing is if you had, for example, if you're only gonna have foreign language in one school, you know, if it made sense to have foreign language in Dover, continue it here and offer it to Ward'sboro, but rather have the teacher move, have a field trip of bringing, you know, students in for joining the class for Spanish, then that's something for Bill would need to consider, right?
Right. So, but we're not gonna tie his hands, we're not gonna say you have to have Spanish in both buildings.
Right.
We're saying that we want foreign language.
Right, available to.
Available to everybody.
Yes.
You tell us how you think it's best to do it. Is that kind of the?
Could I say something?
Yeah, well, that's why we're all here.
I remember many conversations in both study groups, of our in, uh, Townsend and your group, where you talked about not just the opportunities for the students to have , um, new things, but sharing resources. And neither one of those culture statements seems to be open-minded enough to me in the sense of welcoming the opportunity for sharing resources, welcoming the opportunity to make new friends, welcoming the opportunity to share ideas. So the one element that strikes me that was a little bit missing was, was from those conversations that you all used to have over and over and over again. And, um, just an impression, it's not really a fully formed thought, but I, I'd like to see you dedicate some time to encouraging the two schools to blend into blending. to encouraging the two schools to, into blending, whatever.
Well, I, I think that's gonna, I think that's gonna follow through on these.
You think it will?
So honoring the culture was what's existing now that they'd like. So there was no sharing now, so I, I understand why that's not there. I think out of those three questions, you know, I think that equality, equity, more opportunities covers what you're concerned about. I thought one where neither schools pulled down and unity develops between teacher, students, I think that covers that. And I also think taxpayers see value that brings the two towns, parents feel fortunate. I mean, to me, that is all about, I think, more of the, of the, kinda like the foresight to now have the two groups.
Well, I realize that you can't administrate open-heartedness, that it has to come, you know, from within, but.
But, no, and I think they do too, isn't that a little bit of what the PBIS is about? Is, is, um, expanding with the, the kids and, and the, their circle of friends and the groups and the way they act with each other.
It's more of a behavior.
Behavior. Okay, so I think, I think we, I do think we have that, I mean, if it's not spelled out specifically like that. But we'll, we'll go through the rest in a moment and then see if you feel more comfortable.
Sure.
And if not, we can put something in there about that.
I mean, one thing to add in of that is an ability, I'd imagine throughout the school year of, you know, each building coming together as one building for different opportunities, whether that's concerts, you know, field trips to the each other's school for a larger activity. I would imagine that that would be something built into the program. If it's not something that happens, you know, weekly, you know, to try to do that monthly, so that there is that between, you know, so it's not just their building, our building, but there is that sharing opportunity.
You good with that, Bill?
I just kinda revealed it, so are we asking Bill to create a structure, a structure of what, an overall structure of the two buildings?
In terms of? Educational program, educational structure, right.
Programming?
The, the whole thing, Bill's gonna design a school for us.
He's gonna design a school.
Kind of teachers we need.
Right, exactly.
What's gonna be offered.
Administration, what, what can be offered, alright.
So we're giving him some guidance.
Okay.
So that he doesn't come back saying that, hey, my recommendation is you close the Dover School, move everybody to Ward's Borough, because nothing's gonna get the kids closer together than all being jammed into that one building.
Right, okay.
We're gonna look at him and say, Bill, you wasted a whole bunch of time, go back to the drawing board.
So rather than us, you know, kinda discussing and beating it, that he'll come up back with something and then we'll review it and then kinda talk.
And he'll, he'll, as he starts reviewing it with his people, he'll have some clarifying questions. You know, like, maybe he comes back and says, you know, one of the things for unity is I think both buildings should be painted purple. So we can be the purple Panthers, or, um, isn't that the, no, pink Panthers, we'll paint the buildings pink. And then, you know, we say, Bill, come on. So we're just trying to give him a little bit of guidance.
Okay.
So I think, you know, one of the guidances we're giving him is the, the top ten in the culture. We're giving him those three top results that we're looking for, how, you know, we know things are getting better. And I think we're telling him with buildings, we definitely wanna see two distinct buildings. But how he utilizes them, he has to come back to us. Unless somebody wants to be very specific and say, you know, I, I wanna see, you know, you could come back and be very specific and say, we wanna just have K through three in each building and then he wants to build a super building for four, five, and six in between the town. I mean, that's something we can tell him, but I think we're telling him right now, you've got those two buildings, that's all you're gonna have, make it work. Unless, something different. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
So then the next thing I had was curriculum. And I think from, again, the culture, I think the, I had IB and I had NIC, which is I think the program you're doing now in Ward's Borough. So I think both of them need to, you know, whatever Bill designs, both of them are fairly new programs. Um, when we start our new school, we'll still have a few months left in the, in the NIC program. And we don't know where the IB is going yet because we haven't gotten word here. But I think it would be really difficult for us to tell Bill to either keep them or do away with either one. Because I think they're fairly new and Bill's just gonna have to, in his study or in his proposal, um, be a little loose with that to tell us how he's gonna, you know, how much time he wants to invest to looking at these programs or if the programs are worthwhile or if he thinks that they're not. And then he'll just have to give us reasons why he thinks that they're not appropriate for this new system. Unless, unless we wanna say you have to have these two programs for, you know, at least two years, that's something we need to, need to suggest.
I have a question for both, probably that and for the programs that you have right now, you're kind of almost in the authorization phase, IB program and the NIC program. Have either of you asked the accrediters accreditation, you know, as 2019, we're going to be one, uh, school district, two different buildings?
We've had that discussion a couple of times.
I'm curious about what you feedback that they've given each of you about the program. In other words, will it require the other school building to become part of this accreditation? Or will they allow each building?
We have discussed that, and I don't know if you weren't here, but we've had that discussion.
I haven't heard that, so.
Okay, Matt, you wanna talk about the IB, cause we have asked them since we're in, we wanted.
Yeah, IB is building-based, so it's not dependent on your organizational structure.
Okay.
Yeah, so the NIC is, um, it's not accredited or anything, but the hope is that it will spread throughout the district.
Okay.
And that's, and you're kinda the guinea pig for Wyndham Central.
Exactly.
And you did this with the grant through Bill with Bill's approval and you're moving it forward.
So, so talking about that, I don't know, we talked, you maybe mentioned or one of the meetings was obviously giving each of these a chance to, to the NIC and the, and the IB program to, to review them all over a period of time and then kinda either picking one or taking the best elements of both to create.
Or keeping both, I mean, they're not exclusive, one is an exclusive of the other.
Right, so, is that something like, let's say we decide to do that and to review both of these programs over a couple of years, several years? And then, so who, would, would Bill be the person or would we be the, the guys, the group to, to implement which one goes in? Or would he make a recommendation?
So, what, how it should happen, if it's everything being equal, is, we would hope our, that Bill and the administrators would make a recommendation to the board, because IB requires a payment every year.
Yeah.
And I don't, there's, there's not, you've got a grant for the NIC stuff, right? There's not a lot of expenditure.
There's no, there's no expenditure right now, it'll just be the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tammy. It'll be the investment in targeted professional development based on what we learn during the action research. Would that be fair? And so that'll definitely be an investment. The whole plan is that we're gonna test out some things in Ward's Borough and see how they feel, see how they work, measure them, test them again, and then recognize what kinda skills we want our teachers to have. And then we're gonna need to invest to make sure that that happens. But we're getting it for free with Tammy and two teachers in Ward's Borough like that.
But that's professional development, so that, it's not like we're, it's not like IB where we need a line item that, that puts money into that. That would just be, we would have to make adjustments in our, our professional development. And we'll have to make sure that aligns any agreements and contracts. And that would be a recommendation from Bill and, and the administrators. You know, they may come back and saying neither program is worth the investment, or, you know, after a year. So, but I think what we're doing is, we're, if we kinda stay silent on it and we just say, Bill, you tell us which curriculum. Most of the curriculum is covered, the state has, has minimum standards, which all these programs meet. It's just kinda the enrichment thing, and the IB was looking to be a step better. And this NIC was looking to do a step better for, for the students. So, um, if they find that it's not doing a step better, they may, after a year, come back or before we even start, you know, next, in the fall or the summer, Bill may say, yeah, I found this great new program and I recommend, you know, we start doing this and incorporates the best of everything we're doing in. But we're allowing him and his people to make that recommendation to us, right?
Correct.
So you're okay with that?
No, I think, I think, uh, what Dwight might have been suggesting is that these are nascent programs, which you were also suggesting, and you don't wanna cut them off at the knees. But what is the process for reporting back to the board?
Right.
How are these working, what are the investments we're making, and?
Yeah, what's the process, exactly. I wonder, I wonder if the two schools could have regular meetings, Dover and Ward's Borough, about what each is doing during, during this whole process. That way, it's not like we're not just, at the end of it, we're also, okay, yeah, this is one, this is the other. And, you know, I would think that way both schools can get an idea of what's happening with the other schools.
Hey, Peter, could you just note in your minutes, your notes of this work session, that we shouldn't maybe ask for a brief update maybe every other month from the two building administrators on the IB and the NIC? And then that way we can be hearing it while Bill's making, so that he doesn't have to spend a whole lot of time giving us a lot of background. We'll kinda be up to speed anyways.
Yeah.
Does that work for you, Bill?
It's good.
Tammy, is that gonna be okay for you, Matt? We could even do it like the month we meet in your building, we discuss your program, and then when we meet in Ward's Borough, we'll discuss the, the NIC, make it easy and you guys don't always have to go to the other meeting.
Cool.
Okay, is that good, Dwight?
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
So then, the rest of the curriculum, I thought was pretty, you know, the state has its minimum standards. Wyndham Central is working hard anyways with our curriculum coordinator on investing in a lot of, um, you know, professional development. Plus, um, you know, all the schools in Wyndham Central agreed to, I think we gave you like two or three extra professional development days, district-wide. And, you know, all the reports we're getting from the cabinets, reports and from our administrators, um, you know, that it seems to be a worthy investment and it seems to be working well. I don't think we've had any complaints at, at any of the meetings.
Not publicly.
You guys all happy with the extra professional development to the district or is it not worth it? Yeah, I know, that's what a spot with Bill standing and sitting right there. We'll skip that question. Um, the next thing, the, the third thing we kinda, we're looking at, which there's been a lot of discussion, is the itinerant programs, which are the arts, music, um, foreign language, and the, the kinda the, the bonus things like the artist and resident, the, um, music, instrumental music, all the stuff that is, is a little bit, is a kind of above and beyond. And what I found really interesting in, um, when I was reading Ward's Boroughs and I hadn't seen Dover's yet, but just kinda thinking what, if it was up to me to write ten things in Dover. I'm, I'm reading Ward's Borough saying just cross that Ward's Borough and write Dover and it's pretty close. So, we all have arts, we all have some kinda music, we all have, I think the only difference is that Ward's Borough doesn't have a, a specific foreign language program yet. And it's something I thought that you guys, somebody told me you were working on or trying to incorporate. So I think, um, if Bill was to just to use this, this list, you know what we're looking for in both schools? And I think he goes back to Carrie's question, you tell us, how is the best way to offer it? Is it using technology, is it using transportation? Is it using, um, you know, having a staff member go between buildings? And I, I think we leave that up to Bill, because remember, it doesn't have to be exactly the same, it just has to be equitable. And we want it to be, you know, kinda fair, and, um, I think they've decided that equity does not mean exact same. At least that's what Act sixteen sixty-eight does. So, do we wanna, I mean, we can list out all the itinerant things that we wanna see in the program or we can, you know, use those lists and we can be a little bit vague to allow Bill some, you know, one of the things we talked about in the guardrails, you know, we can say we want foreign language, but that's better than saying we want Spanish, because again, Leland and Gray is still investing a lot of time and energy in, in the journey east and, and Chinese. Does the West River Schools do China, Chinese language in the elementary? Do they do any elementary? Or is it kinda catch, it's catch cam too?
I don't think anybody has foreign language.
Okay, so we'll be, we'll be like the leaders in that.
Then the other thing would be the, uh, the Starbase, the tradition of Starbase and STEM that is inculcated in Ward's.
Yeah, in the Ward's Borough thing too.
Yeah, Starbase is great, I, I got a chance to go to that, I would recommend incorporate that into both schools.
Absolutely. That's why the list is great.
And I bet that that's something that Dover would love to do, that sounds very similar to using Hillene, at least for the third grade right now. They do science program at Hillene.
The Starbase is really intense.
Decided to tap, whereas Hillene.
Six, seven, eight.
Sounds like something that Dover would.
Yes, that's what I was trying to quick, is the, the cross.
To do.
But, so, are we okay leaving that like that is? I mean, that's kinda Bill's guardrail, we wanna see these things, but you tell us how and exactly what.
Yes.
Any other thoughts or comments or anybody else wanna throw?
I mean, I, I would just say I'm taking it as we don't want any less than we have and we only expand what we do.
Well, you, you've got, you've got the list.
And I've got the few answers.
Right.
I think that's exactly it, we, you know, we don't want, we, we like what we have in our schools, but we wanna expand it. And it sounds like you have some great programs that any Dover students would be really interested in likewise. So, figuring out just how to do that, to share, so.
Everybody good with that? So the last, the, the, second to last, I'm sorry, the last on this page was the preschool. So there are some pretty major differences in preschool. And some of it's because of the building configuration and some of it is just because of, uh, just the way things are, I guess. So, right now, Ward's Borough has a four-year-old program that can, which is an all-day program that combines with a kindergarten.
Correct.
And that's one staff member does both those programs together, cause they, everything in, in that school is combined grades. In Dover, we have a three and four-year-old program, the four-year-old program just went the whole day, full day, and we have a separate kindergarten program. And the problem is, is again, if we try to make everything exactly the same, there, I don't, I think we kinda figured there was enough room in the Ward's, you don't have an extra classroom, do you? So, we need to think about the preschool and how, so Dover is experimenting, you know, we've had the three-year-old program, we're experimenting, and I can say, cause Laura's not here, the robust, you know, four-year-old program. You know, do we wanna just leave that kinda loose and let, um, let the superintendent and the administrators come back or?
Sorry, I just wanna make, so the three and four-year-olds are one classroom, but the three-year-olds are a half day?
Correct, and it's not exactly a half day, it's.
And it's not the same days either.
And it's the same days.
Right.
Matt, but let Matt give you the five second over.
So it's, um, there's an older group and a younger group. The older group is five days a week, half-days right now.
Got it.
The younger group is three days a week, also half-days, but it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So next year, the older group will be full days, the younger group will stay the same. So the three, the three-year-old group will be three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, half-days, and it's eight to eleven twenty.
Great.
For the half-day.
I've heard there's some kid, but that's open to kids from other towns too.
Right, right.
I know some Ward's Borough kids that are in that program.
Yeah, we.
Right now, the Ward's Borough are tuitioned.
They're tuitioned.
Right, because it's a separate, we're separate districts. But when we're the same district, if we're offering in this building, anybody can come. But is that equitable, because if I live, you know, in the corner of Ward's Borough, can I drive here? Especially if I work in Manchester.
Yeah.
You know, so do we, so the choices we have is, we can kinda leave that open and have Bill come back to us with this is how I think we can make it work. Or we can say, Bill, you gotta figure out how to get a three-year-old program in Ward's Borough. Or we say, Bill, do away with the three and four-year-old program, there's enough private providers in the area, let them do it. And then parents can go where they want, or, you know, we can, we can set whatever we want. Um, my, my thought would be, this one we give to Bill to work with his administrators to come back and, and then he'll have some time hopefully with the Dover three-year-old program and the enhanced four-year-old program to maybe see how that worked. Um, we know how your program has worked, and then they can make a recommendation. Maybe Dover has a, a combined, maybe we combine the kindergarten and the, and the four-year-olds into one group and then, you know, do a separate three-year-old program here, or maybe we try to do something in between the two towns, or we, we don't do three-year-olds.
So for next year, the only difference would be that, is that Dover will have a three-year-old program three days a week.
And, and the four-year-olds are all day.
Well, our four-year-olds are all. All four-year-olds are all day too.
Right.
It's really the same though, because it's offered currently in the universal pre-k.
Well, that's what I was gonna point out, is that all three-year-olds are available for ten hours, which is what Dover runs.
Right, right, right.
It's just whether you run it internally or whether you don't run it internally, but a three-year-old gets ten hours. They go to Mount Snow, they go to.
You go where we like.
Right.
Yeah, unfortunately, there aren't room in Wardsborough, maybe we could do two days in Wardsborough, two days in Dover, if that makes sense, or something like that.
Well, let, or we, we can just ask them to tell us what the best.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because maybe they can, I know, I remember back when we lost Tony to Wardsborough, she was teaching kindergarten at the town hall. And you guys were using that as, as a classroom. So there's nothing that says that can't be part of Bill's planning is that they, maybe have the person that does a three-year-old program, spend half a day here in this building, and they go to Wardsborough and lead it to town hall. But let's, let's give him.
Well, the Wardsborough library is a great space.
It's available.
But again, we're not, we're not.
We don't wanna.
We don't wanna really tie that. Yeah. Do we wanna leave this open or do we wanna, do we wanna make a decision and say, no three-year-olds or no four-year-olds or, or yes, three-year-olds? Or do we wanna say, you know what you got in Dover, you know what you got in Wardsborough, come back and tell us what's the best?
Which can I ask, how big her program is, the kindergarten or some of the pre-k?
Yeah.
How many students do you have for the pre-k that you?
So, I mean, it depends on the year. This year is a small group, there's five. And there's about ten in the class total, so it's about five and five.
How long have you had the program for?
Uh, many, many years.
Is it, is that about the averages?
Well, it's decreased. When, when I was teaching, the average class size was about eight kids.
But you also, you've got upset towns.
Yeah. Yeah, next year we have eleven coming in, so.
And then you could, you could have fifteen the year, right?
Right.
No, may, maybe part of, part of your, part of your presentation with us, Bill, is maybe the birth records of the two towns for the next, you know, ten years. I'm sorry.
Do you wanna poll people, okay?
The, the last five years, so we would know over the next five years, what kind of numbers that are projected.
See how reliable is that?
Well, it's worked in Dover really well in thirty years.
Yeah.
If you look, if, so we had Paul Mendelson was the financial planner. And he predicted that we would have two hundred and fifty students in this building in nineteen ninety-something. So we built this huge addition and our numbers go down to like fifty.
Thank you, Paul.
Right, thank you, Paul, because we did get anything before Act sixty. So I always joked that Paul was making, was thinking of, you know, how he wanted to make money. Uh, we had a guy named Mike Jacobs that lived in Timber Creek and he was an actuary for a big insurance company. And what he did was he looked at thirty years' worth of records in Dover and took the birth records and took how many children were born and compared it to five years later when they started kindergarten. And he found they were within two to four percent of the numbers, kids born were the number of kids that entered the school in kindergarten. But they weren't the same kids, because they used to list names.
Right.
You didn't have the same names, but it was a pretty accurate reflection. And he made a prediction versus Paul's, and his prediction for the ten years he went out was he was almost dead on.
The A R I O's get paid.
And so we, we've done that and that's why I think if Bill does, like, if he could go ten years back and just look at the numbers and maybe he finds us a five percent or ten percent, and then you take the next five years and you can have maybe a five-year projection. And that's what we used to do when it was more important, being more tight on the numbers at the school, is that's how we predicted our population down the road. So, I don't know if my buddy Levison knows that, but I'll have to tell him sometime. So anyways, preschool, what do you guys wanna do with that? We can have more discussion, we can move forward, we can tell Bill, you see what we got, make the predictions and some recommendations and tell us how it should look?
I talked, some people have mentioned to me, they said they, they, when the Wardsborough kids that went to Dover, they said they loved it and they were really excited by it and, I don't know, I think it's a good thing also for working families.
That might be, that might be interesting to have a conversation, to invite the public of looking at that and having one more conversation about it. While, to help Bill plan. Because I think that that's probably a topic that people would be interested in. If you said, you know, we're gonna talk about this, of what it looks like in Wardsborough and Dover, I, I bet you would get some family, some people coming to talk about that. Well, you had, um, one person that was interested and came to the Dover school board meeting specifically asking questions about, I, I imagine that there'd be some people interested in that, but.
Okay, we're gonna talk after the meeting. Okay, so we'll discuss it at the next meeting in Wardsborough. We'll have one more discussion, Bill, on that.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that or do we wanna just tell them to move forward with what we got? There's three other board members.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem telling him to move forward with what we got, just because there are other options besides just going to Dover. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah. Probably.
If you have the person that, you know, works in Manchester is rich that, you know, I mean, maybe they find something in London area between, you know, I mean, there are enough programs out there that are offered, that give people options outside of what's offered in the school. So.
And so you tuition or you?
Well, we want to pay.
Three-year-olds, remember, that's why we changed in Dover, the money doesn't go to the school any longer. The three and four-year-olds, the money's portable, portable. They can go wherever they want with it. They don't have to come to us. They can go, you know, if they wanna drive their kid to Burlington to take advantage of a program, they can do that.
Right, but does it, is it a stipend?
Well, it's, it's the four, uh, the, I'm sorry, the thirty-seven hundred, the.
They get ten hours. And then they get the money. They get thirty-two hundred bucks, because they have to offer ten hours.
So that then I would sign up my child wherever, school, London area, and then the school district pays that.
Look, like if you're going to Brattleboro, if you're working next to St. Mike's and you wanna bring your kid there because you're working part-time and it works really slick, you go right to drop your child off, go to work, get done work. That was one of the things that the legis, I, I felt like the legislator hurt public schools a little bit on. Cause you know, it used to be that you could do that if there wasn't a program offered in your town. But if your town put the effort into offering a program, you had to go there, the money wasn't portable or movable, now it is.
And I would just say, just remember that you guys are giving some guidance and I'm just gonna do some work with my team and give you a view. You know what I mean?
And we have to approve.
And then you guys are gonna have to be like, you're insane, or, I'm trying to get this information so I can be less insane. You know, and I can give you back what you guys are telling me, that the community has given you, what you guys have heard, or the study committee talked about. So that my first shot out of the gate is close to what you guys are thinking about, talking about, heard of. But there's gonna be multiple opportunities to say, all right.
From, from not just us, but parents will be, they're all in public meetings. So that would probably cover your concern, Carrie, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, so you're satisfied that your Wardsborough folks, they don't need a three-year-old program because they have stipends, they have a child, they can pick whatever program, ward.
There are several programs available for them, yes.
Okay, so why don't you move with that?
Okay.
And then we'll just make sure, again, we, we'll warn the meetings about the people if they have an interest in this upcoming. Okay, so the preschool, we're pretty well set on, right, everybody's? Okay, and then the last thing I have, we got like one and a half things. The last thing I have was transportation. So, we were talking about we were gonna do transportation, but I think transportation's gonna be a big part of what they set up. Um, how buses go, because, you know, what programs get offered where, how they utilize transportation. All transportation's supposed to go through central office. Currently, we don't do that because we got a waiver, because we were able to prove that, um, it's cheaper to do it ourselves and there's no, the transportation for Wyndham Central cannot take on the additional burden of, of Dover and that you guys utilize them anyways. But we also have a kind of a hybrid system where we utilize the mover also, public transport, excuse me, public transportation. So, um, at first I was thinking we should just spend a lot of time on this, but I think Bill should work on his program first and then see how he needs the transportation. Um, you know, one of the things is like the, you guys have winter sports, Camp Kuwaitan. The, I don't know if you guys provide transportation district band, it would make sense because, you know, probably the bus goes up to Leland and Gray and comes back. So, my thought was, instead of us working, spending some time spinning our wheels on transportation, since we still have some time, let's leave transportation also to, to the administration and let him kind of work that into the, the big picture. And then we'll have to make the policies. And I think the, the big pop thing that we need to work on is where we're gonna transport secondary students. Um, but I think for the elementary and how they utilize it for field trips is we should leave, maybe leave that to the administration. Thoughts on that? Tammy, you got any thoughts on that? I wanna pick on you, ladies first. Would you be, cause you, you have enough information to help Bill with that, correct?
Oh, absolutely, sure.
Matt, you okay?
So we're gonna ask them just for the elementary at the level to, to be sent?
Well, I, that was just something throughout, we can ask him to do both.
So I would say that, yeah, that you have two separate issues.
Right.
One is, whatever structure you guys decide upon, that will really gauge what the transportation system looks like. And then you have seven through twelve, and that's a completely separate thing of what do you guys wanna offer? How does it look? What, what are we currently offering in Wardsborough? What are we currently offering in Dover? And how do we wanna offer it as a new group?
Right.
I think that I would, it would probably make the most sense that elementary would wait until you guys have a structure that you think is where you wanna go.
Well, I was hoping you would tie the transportation into your structure.
I could do that, yeah.
Because I think that's important.
Sure.
You know.
What, what do you need guidance from us on, whether it's choice or that, that kind of stuff between schools?
No, I was gonna go there next, that was a task.
All right, sorry.
So, my thing is like, where I was going with this in my thought process and listening to all these meetings and, you know, taking a lot of notes and having a lot of paper, and then, you know, I meet with Bill and Rick and I meet before the meeting to make sure the agenda's correct and we have all the, the information we need, so we're not spinning wheels. One of the things that came up with is, you know, like, we wanna see foreign language in all the bill, in, 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 available to all the students. And like Carrie was saying, how do you do that? Do you do that by the teacher moves or the student moves? Or the program uses the internet? So I thought if we pull away the transportation from him, he may design a system that says, yeah, what I'm gonna do is, is we're gonna have an all, we're gonna have an all district saying once a month and we're, I'm gonna utilize this transportation. And then we say, well, that's not what we're gonna do, we're not gonna have that transportation. Then we just blew part of his plan out of water.
Right.
So I think what we're asking him to do is look at the entire package. And if we just give him little, little parts of it, then we're gonna be going back to him and saying, well, that doesn't work now because you gotta incorporate this. So that's why I was hoping to maybe give him the whole kit and caboodle. Um, and even to some extent, I think that I'd like to see them also make a recommendation on transportation for secondary. Because, you know, one of the things we found this year in Dover in, in being requested to look at transportation in Brattleboro via school bus versus mover, is that by going to Brattleboro, it was one of the buses that we own, it created some issues for the elementary level, so that Matt recommended an earlier start time or a later start.
Earlier.
Earlier start time for the elementary. So I mean, you know, you don't think that it would have a whole big, um, impact, but it does. So, I think by giving Bill the big picture look at, that's what he is. He's a big picture guy. And we're the one, you know, we're supposed to set the huge picture, so we're saying, yeah, we wanna school system that has some transportation and it has the buildings and it has curriculum, and now you tell us how it's gonna look. So, we can get very specific or we can say to Bill that there's, and, and again too, remember, transportation is not required. We, we are not required to transport anybody. But an interesting thing came up in Barry when I went with Stratton up to meet with the secretary, not the secretary, but with the, the group that's gonna redraw the district of the, what the map of Vermont looks like. And one of the things that Tom on the Magny said is Stratton has a very extensive transportation system for its students to get them to different places. And they had met with, oh, Windhall, Sandgate?
Ira.
Ira, they also met with, um.
Searsburg.
Searsburg, and none of those towns offer transportation. And they're, the Stratton people wanted the transportation. They enjoyed having their children be able to get. And the way the towns kind of split up, you know, um, it worked out really well for them. And they, that was another concern, why they didn't wanna combine, because they would be the smallest number and all these other groups are saying, there's no way we're transporting students. So, I'd like to, again, give that to Bill and say, Bill, bring something to us. Again, what he says doesn't have to be, but he's gonna give us a big picture, how it all fits together. And then we have to say, okay, well, Bill, what happens if we pull this little piece out? And then he'll be able to know because he set it up and saying, well, how it affects things or, you know, maybe he comes up with a plan and every person in the, both towns, you know, feels the greatest things since sliced bread and we move on.
Okay.
Thoughts, questions, comments?
Will you break that down into, I imagine you would anyway, elementary school, transportation versus secondary?
I'd like him to break it down, but let him do both of those.
Right.
And then whatever policies need to come from that, then there would be some recommendations from Bill and we would have to adopt the policy. Remember, we didn't do the transportation policy. And we'd just make sure that, we asked that Bill that that's kind of one of the beginning things he starts on, so that we can start looking at that to start getting some input from people. Cause again, transportation is usually a big thing for parents, because, you know, it is Vermont and, definitely true Vermont is one that works two jobs, they base property taxes and they're still delinquent, so we gotta get to work. Everybody okay?
Yes.
Bill? So then, the half thing I had, which Dwight got back, and it kind of circles back around to the, the buildings and the grounds, is we talked about a policy on which building you attend. So, again, we were gonna do that and we were gonna bring, bring that, um, bring that up with the parents and kind of work on that when Bill was working and his people were working on the structure. But again, I think depending on what we do with the preschool and how he does the itinerant programs and, you know, having the two buildings and where he's moving these grounds, I think that needs to kind of come from suggestion, suggestions from Bill and his staff too. Because remember, the big thing where people were scared of, when we were having the study committee was, you know, one school gets overloaded, um, you know, but like, um, we talked about things like where a parent lives, because there's a lot of people who live on North Street that it's much easier for them to get to Dover than it is for them to get to Wardsborough. There's also, you know, people were afraid that everybody would wanna come to Dover, cause it's a bigger school and then there wouldn't be enough students in the Wardsborough building. Or every student wanted to go to Wardsborough and again, Tammy, take another hundred kids, how's that gonna look over there? They'll be sitting in your office with you all the time. So, there needs to be, and I think the suggestion needs to come from Bill and staff on how they do that. Um, you know, and I, I think things that, you know, if we wanna give them some guidance, you know, some of the things that came up, like if there's only one boy in the class, you know, or one girl in the class, do you allow people to move because of that? Do you, if there's conflict with an instructor, a teacher between a, a child or parents with a child, but then, you know, if you do that, do you overload, you know, is there perception that one teacher's bad because a parent doesn't want their child in that class? You know, how do you deal with that? Um, I think the, um, or the principal, or they don't like the building, or they're allergic to the colors, or, you know, who knows? So, I didn't know if there was anything we should give up or talk about, or Bill, any thoughts you have. But I thought if you could maybe then kind of rough out how you move students around, if there is movement around. And, you know, what, what the thoughts would be for that from both the board and, and the administration. And again, that's something that we can take on our own and, and work on, but I think it also needs to play into what Bill's designing for us.
Well, you don't anticipate a program where a student may be like switching. I wanna try, I wanna start in Wardsborough and then I wanna spend a little bit of time in Dover, and then I wanna come back to Wardsborough. You know, it's kind of, they would stay at one school for ideally the year, not going back and forth or do a a little bit of here, a little bit of there.
So that, that could be something that they'll build, whatever the child decides, it's for the year. Or whatever decisions made is for the year. Or whatever decision's made, it's for the year, or for the calendar year. But then, you know, there's always an exception. You know, what if a child, you know, nowadays, if the child starts in Dover because they live on North Street, and, in Dover, but then they move, you know, two houses up, and now they're in Wardsboro, technically, you know, they're supposed to go to Wardsboro School. And, you know, we had that with one family that kind of lived on the line, and they claimed that they lived in Wardsboro because Wardsboro didn't have the sewage ordinance, and Dover did. They didn't wanna build their septic system by the standards of Dover. Then all of a sudden, the kid's riding the Dover school bus, saying, oh, we live in Dover. So, you know, you can't have your cake, you eat it too. But how, you know, how does, how do they address that? Or, you know, how do they address students? You know, one of the big issues is that we, we have a pretty transient area sometimes, because, you know, there's a lot of rentals available till November fifteenth. And then a lot of people rent a condo till November fifteenth, and then they gotta move. So they, maybe they find a house in Wardsboro, and then, you know, um, then the people rent it for the ski season, so they move to Dover somewhere, to, you know, the Snow Creek Inn across from the police station. And they live there for the four or five winter months, and then they move back into Wardsboro. So do, are they allowed to bounce by schools? Because now it's one district. Rick, you're laughing, because you've been through it all.
Oh, yeah. No, I've seen all of that, but I mean, I think that's, that's something administrative over there. Probably needs to get taken care of. It's just my opinion, but.
Well, and I think that...
That was it coming up with a strict policy for that is kind of...
Yeah, I mean, the school choice thing was a huge discussion at the study committee, and...
And we agreed, no, we need, the board needs to come up with a policy.
Absolutely. But I think we have time, I guess is my point, is that, uh... School, I mean, it was obviously discussed, so it has to be, just like transportation, has to be part of whatever, but the specific policy and how it plays out, I think we need to take some time.
And I think until we know the structure too, that's gonna help us determine the policy.
Correct. I mean, I can do some pre-work and get you guys some examples of merged districts, and what they are doing for their, uh, school choice. Once you hand off the stuff, I can give you guys stuff to do work.
Right.
You know?
But to, see, to me, it really depends on what you, you present with us.
We might get some gems. You guys can do some good stuff. I think it makes sense to, to treat school choice as a long-term project that's gonna be based on what you guys decide for a structure. Because it's gonna tie into the transportation. It's gonna tie into everything.
You guys have been silent over there. You haven't said a word to us yet.
I'm good right now. There are definitely issues that I have some opinions on, but...
Let's hear it. If you, I mean, I don't wanna force you to, but I mean, it'd be good to, if, if you think we should make some stricter guard, guidelines or guardrails for, then let's, you know, this is a time to hear, because instead of him spending a bunch of time, the staff spending a bunch of time, and then you bringing up a really good point, and I'm saying, okay, well, no, that's not gonna work. It is appropriate now, and that's why we're doing this. We won't hold anything against you, I promise.
Well, I think you're one of them for transportation. Um, and I know that this is probably more a financial piece than anything else, that I think you have to include a mover cost. I think you have to, because you've got kids that are going all over the place, not just to one or two schools, and they're using the mover like crazy. Um, so to me, that would be a big piece.
Please, but let's, we're not gonna call it mover, we'll call it public transportation.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I think, Bill, you got that, didn't you?
That's what our public transportation is, so...
Yeah, no, that's, he's got that in there.
You know, so...
Perfect. What, what else you got for us?
I would also say to the preschool piece is that I think, I think you'd be surprised at how hard it is to get into some preschools in the area. Dover has like a third, not Dover, Mount Snow, I know for, for infants at this point, has like a nine-month waiting list.
So they're not infants anymore?
I, I get that, but I mean, then, but then they, they have, they go somewhere else, they, they do something later. And so, you know, to look at how long, because I think a lot of places are trying to change kind of their, their licensing and their structures, and sometimes, um, then with those different licenses come different parameters for how many kids can be there, and how many instructors and stuff. So it might be a good idea to look at some of those elements too, about, you know, what are some of the offerings, and, um, what does that look like for three and four-year-olds?
While he's kind of trying to figure out what we're gonna offer.
Right, right, what, you know, what a, what a structure is, you know, is, so is it going to be better to make sure that Wardsboro has a system in place as well as Dover?
Tammy, is there a lot available in Wardsboro for, for any preschool stuff? Or is there anything besides you?
Really, only some private things, I think. There's really nothing that's offered.
Now, where would you guys say that most of the people do? A lot of people work in Manchester, 'cause I know, Rick, you have to say, people...
That was you.
I would say, no.
So you think, I thought you said some, now people go to Manchester, drop their kids in the one area.
No, no, you had said, it's, it's irrelevant.
I, I just, I didn't know, because that's a good point, because it's not like in Brattleboro where there's twelve or fifteen different day, you know, Montessori, Saint Mike's, um, kids' plays, and... So there isn't as much available, so then it falls upon the public school system to make that available, so... Excellent point. And what else you got? Or if you have anything, I mean, don't...
I think one of the, the bigger concerns for me is, is when you're talking about programming, and, well, kid wants to, you know, is from Dover, wants to be Dover, but let's say that they're offering something great at Wardsboro, they'd like to be part of, busing kids during the day to get there and back, to me, you're losing a ton of instructional time. And that really worries me, is that, you know, not that teachers like to travel back and forth between schools, but I hate to see kids being transported during the school day.
I think, and you said, kind of said that too, didn't you, Carrie?
Or just what that looks like, right? Because that's, right, do you want to have kids...
How much time are they wasting on the bus?
When they can be doing things, whereas the teacher, you know, starts a morning over, one school comes over for instruction, another school, or technology, or...
Well, and we also talked about technology. Could, could we utilize the high-speed internet, the, the fiber that we have between the buildings, to maybe one teacher can teach in Wardsboro, but can teach students in both buildings? Anything else?
I'll be good for now.
Okay. Well, no, those are really good things, and, and we appreciate it, because we can say, hey, we had input from parents too.
Mark, you want to go on from that?
School choice, that, that, that kind of issue. I think that you probably wanna give a foundation to Bill, to start with on that. Um, so whether it's geographical, or, and I don't know what else you'd use, but, you know, almost like a, a pen diagram? I forget what they're called, but you've got two circles and a little area in, in, in Venn, thank you. Um, you know, so if you're, you know, in circle A, you go to Dave, in Dover, circle B, you go to Wardsboro. But if you're in this little area in between, you can petition the board for which school you want, based on, based on location, not based on desire. So it's how close you are to the school, or transportation for the parent.
Do you remember that we put in about school choice policy?
What was it?
In the, in the study, we actually had some parameters. Bill, do you remember?
I think it was pretty, it was pretty...
You were going to create one. So I remember, we talked about siblings, was one of the, siblings, the town, the town residence, siblings, and special factor.
It's just been a basic decision of the board, you know.
Yeah. There was, there were some...
There were some very basics.
Yeah, so Bill, we just make sure you have those in mind. And those should be in that paper I did up a while ago, when we were looking at, um, stuff from the study, that we had to make sure we, we included in our study. Give me one second, Mark, can I get... Because I remember, some of it isn't very specific to the education. It's more like the voting and the, the board member. Do you have it, Carrie?
So I think it's Article sixteen, school attendance and enrollment.
Yeah.
So just talk about, uh, choice may be women only when, where necessary to the legitimate operational needs of the unified district and meet applicable legal requirements. Policies respecting choice shall consider issues including, but not limited to, transportation, socioeconomic equity, proximity to the selected building, meaning of siblings, and the capacity of receiving schools and sending schools. So that's pretty broad, in general.
Yeah, that's language that's taken from the public choice, nineteen twelve.
You have now, I mean, this. Okay, so just make sure, Bill, we gotta include that.
Okay. I think Bill's point is well-taken. You know, he's saying, you know, when we, the, the, the structure is designed, the idea is that if, whatever town you're in, you'll be able to have all, you know, all, all the opportunities that are available to you. So, you know, we're gonna really kind of move families to realize that wherever you're going is gonna be, you're gonna get the same education as, as the other place. So that kind of takes that, that should take that out of the equation. You know, you can't say, um, well, I wanna go over to Dover because I'm gonna be, but the program's over there. That's out.
So, so here's an example. They, they're gonna be substantially equal, but they can't be the same. Because in Wardsboro, we know we can't have individual grades K through six, because we don't have a building that can do that.
But the education, it should be...
So maybe a parent from Wardsboro says, my child is very young for his age, and I don't want him in a combined grade, because the six-year-old, the sixth graders are so much above my fifth grader, I think he would do a lot better in the Dover fifth grade, because it's a single-grade classroom. So I think that's, that could be a reason to do it. Because it's not gonna be, you're not gonna see the same thing in both buildings. We, we know that.
I mean, it's not like, but they're not identical, but the opportunities should be, should be the same. That's what we're striving for.
And, but it's, it's never gonna be. There are always gonna be some differences.
Right. There's gonna be some differences, but are they, you know, are they large enough to, to allow for...
I don't know. Are you the parent or not?
No, I know. That's what I'm saying, as a board, to make that decision, so, um, you know...
Remember, we wanna give them a policy, so the decision's made by the policy, and they're not making that decision, and it's not being based on favoritism, or because I know somebody... And that's, you know, the thing we're, we're finding with policies is, is policies are very restrictive. You can't, they can't vary a policy. And the board shouldn't vary a policy. The board set a policy, we shouldn't make exceptions. We can change policy.
Right.
So... Bill, you look like really befuddled now.
No, 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 no. I was just thinking about what, what Dwight said. That is the goal. I mean, that's what I am going to attempt to make happen. And then you guys will decide whether...
You did it.
We had come close to that, and what changes have to be made?
Yeah, the hope is that, you know, people will feel comfortable going to the school they're in. That's our goal. I think it should be one of those. And if that's the case, and then the policy may become a little easier for us.
A lot easier.
That's hope.
But you're always, you're always gonna have...
But you're always gonna get those, right. Then we have to make a decision, either a case by case, or based on policy. Right.
Yeah.
Is school choice part of a district?
Well, there's still secondary school choice.
Well, no, that I understand, but for, for elementary, I mean...
Yes, we, we agreed to, in the articles, that we would have a policy as to which building the child attended. It's one school, one school district. So it's like in Brattleboro, you know, they have five elementary schools, four elementary schools?
Three.
Three. So it's basically based on residence, but there is the ability to ask to go to a different school. Like, if you live on Green Street, you're probably gonna go to Green Street School, I would guess. I, I don't, the other one's out in West B.
And then there's one down at ten, Pope Road, there's...
Yeah, so, and I think that when Bill was saying, you know, he'll bring us some policies, I'm sure that the Brattleboro school board has already had a policy on that, because I'm sure, you know, they've had people move from an apartment next to Green Street School to Oak Grove, and want to stay in Green Street School. Maybe their policy says you stay in the school you started in, as long as you live in, in the town or something. So that would be, you know, that would be Bill to make that recommendation. Um, that would get to be our decision.
But it seems like the base policy that, that you're starting from though, is you go to the school in your town, and then there's, Bill will come up with some...
Well, that, that's not the base, that's in the, that's in the Articles of Agreement. Right?
It's whatever Article sixteen...
Right, I think it said, didn't it say that...
It said policy.
Right, we would say policy, but we would consider where the residency and siblings, and that's, that's the basis of where you're gonna start off with. Cool?
Yeah, I still feel like it should be a little bit stronger of a foundation, but...
Okay, well, make a suggestion. Tell us what you want us to say.
Well, I, I'd say you go to the school, that's, the school that's in your district is what you go to, and then there can be a handful of policies that...
The, the district is, both schools are in the district.
And, and the town, and the town, excuse me.
And, and we, I think that we have.
I think what that said, the article said though, is that policies will be created based on that paragraph that you read. So you still have to decide on whether that's the policy that you want.
Well, I think that was kind of the feeling all through. I mean, we could set that, that the basis of the policy is whatever town you live in, is the school you're gonna go to.
Right.
Is a building you're gonna attend, right?
Well, no, technically, you'd make attendance zones.
Okay.
And you could make the town the attendance zone. But you would make an attendant zone within the school district.
Okay.
Because essentially, the town lines have to disappear, because you're creating a new legal entity.
Well, the school... We're not creating a new town, we're creating a school. So we can still base it on the town, just like they did the only grade.
We're saying the same thing. I'm just saying, you've created a new school district that incorporates the entire square mileage of two other municipalities.
It's an overlay, it's an overlay.
It's an overlay, right? And then under that overlay, you will design a policy that will describe how a school choice arrangement would work. I would just say, I would, you, you would be creating attendance zones.
Okay. So here's our two...
Based on population, you could create...
Or we could, you know, we could draw an artificial line, and draw the, the river that runs between the two towns.
That's right.
So Mark is saying that he'd like to see us give Bill a little bit more guidance, be a little bit more restrictive. So we've kind of said, follow what was in the Articles of Agreement, and come up with something. So how do you guys feel? Do we wanna be a little more restrictive? Do we give Bill a little more guidance? Or do we wanna leave it the way we've, we've left, we originally discussed it?
I think, well, this girl got saying that this particular area in is the basis for your town.
Mark's saying no, Bill's saying no.
If it's not in there, then that, that needs to be...
Okay, or the, the, what we would do is we would say, Bill, give us how you're gonna, you know, using geography of the, the area, tell us how you recommend. I think that's what you're kind of looking for a little bit.
Well, I, I mean, I would start with the town. If you're in Dover, you go to Dover. If you're in Wardsboro, you go to Wardsboro. I just, I'm just saying it.
Hang on, hang, hold on to that, Bob.
Yeah, I agree.
You agree with that?
Yeah, yeah, so...
Okay, so there's your, your guides, here's your, here's your tenant zones.
I do kind of like his idea of that.
Yeah, so there's three yeses, so...
I do like the idea a little bit of that gray zone, you know, you're in the...
So if you live in the river...
It may be a gray zone, if you live in the river, that gray zone.
And you can strip one from the other. How wide is that line?
That's right. That's where your septic is, where you go.
There you go.
That's a policy.
I like it, that's where your, where your waist goes.
Right, right.
Whichever school is closest to...
So...
The, the outhouses count.
Yeah, right. But I mean, you're pointing before too, because, you know, you, you, we have to be wary as a board that we're not gonna have any shifting from town. So I think that needs to be quite strict.
Well, so, I think we've had to hit that too, that it was kind of, wasn't it our feeling that, you know, we didn't wanna see a lot of bouncing around? The child should stay in whatever school he starts in.
I think it's gotta, it's gotta be...
Except, you know, in very exceptional circumstances. So there's two things. Is that good?
They sound good to me.
You got your way. That's why it's good to speak up. See? You got a lot of thing, you brought a lot of good points up. You brought some good points up. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
You got anything, Bill? You wanna say anything?
No.
Um, Tammy?
I think you guys are right on track.
Matt? Peter?
I'm good.
Mr. TV guy? Thumbs up, he says we're great.
Well, Bill is working on this policy, and we'll still be talking about the exceptions to...
Right, remember, Bill's not gonna give us, Bill's gonna give us an outline of a policy.
While he's working on his, um, administration, the structure. We're still gonna be working on these exceptions to the rule of, you know, you attend Dover because you live in Dover. What the exception... you attend Dover because you live in Dover, what the exceptions are.
We, we still, I'm gonna try to get some input to help, because Bill's not gonna work in a bubble either.
Right.
And once a month, Bill's gonna meet with us and say, "Hey, I've got a few questions." So, when we were having a discussion with Mark and Dwight and you about, you know, where you go to school, and we talked about attendance zones, and, you know, what I found is the state recommends that attendance zones be based on where the air quality's better or something. You know, how do you guys feel about that? We can have that discussion and, and give more guidance. He's gonna be looking for guidance as he goes along, as he talks to these folks, they're gonna maybe say, "Hey, what about this?" And Bill's gonna, "Gosh, we, we haven't really talked about that, and it doesn't fit in." And he may come to us and say, "Hey, what about, you know, what do you think of this?" And we give him more guidance so he can narrow it down so that hopefully, at the end of the summer, the, whatever he presents to us is gonna be very palatable. But it's also been out there a little bit, so it's not like a total shock. So, we don't have thirty people who come see the, the new structure and find out that the schools really are gonna be painted pink. And everybody goes, "Are you crazy?"
You'll get more people to come out to a meeting if you put that, if you put that in, if you put that in the morning.
What I'm gonna say is, I'm gonna suggest that Bill do a school with no transportation at all.
And one.
And we'll, we'll have a whole bunch of people here.
People show up.
Yeah. No public transportation either.
It's no ski program.
No, even though you let me cut in front of your mind.
Your grandfather walked to school.
Uphill, six miles, both ways. Boy, it's a, a never-ending escalator. But you laugh, though, I, I still, every time I just meet with people from the end department or any legislators, I say, you know, "You're looking at this map, and you're drawing your circles, and it's flat, and there ain't nothing flat about this area, you know, everything is like this." And they just, they say, "Well, you're only, look at it, Strang's right next to Dover," you know? Well, yeah, but there's no easy way to get there.
We're not all crows.
And I, I rec, I told them about, you know, Randy Capitanic's thing, you know, connected by dirt roads was his suggestion for the name of the district. It's connected by C B D R, was, remember, where we met over there, so.
That's a really bad acronym.
Turner Daniel Dan Revie.
If you add association, I think it'd be really bad.
Especially, you know, it was interesting too, because that Molly Batman didn't, you know, we're trying to explain to her how, "Well, you have a state highway that runs through Strang." Yeah, it runs through this very little corner, and the highway trucks turn around on both sides of it. So, you know, you, you may be fine to get to here, then you sit here, how long have you sat atop Strang Mountain before, waiting to?
Just waiting for the truck to come out.
Yeah, for the Jamaica truck to come over, so you can drive down the hill.
Right.
After you fought the way up the hill, you know? It's, um, and I think, no, it wasn't, it was, um, the study committee, remember?
All right.
We had that really nasty snowstorm, and Strang talked about, I don't know if you saw the minutes I sent you.
Couldn't go to the Sears.
Yeah, Searsburg was supposed to go to them, and they couldn't get off the hill, the road was closed. And Strang's saying, "How can parents come to a meeting, go either way, if they have something they wanna talk about, you know, like about the school you attend, or, you know, the transportation issue? You know, it's gonna exclude parents, so." I think we gave you a whole bunch of stuff, Bill.
Could I?
Now you need to clarify or ask questions.
Yes. Uh, we, we talked about the, uh, question one, the successful, uh, successful transition. I got that. On the survey itself, there were like the top three results.
Honoring the culture.
Yeah.
I think we've covered that.
Yeah, I got that.
Saving money.
Yeah.
We're giving you carte blanche, tell us what.
Okay.
And then the third one was, um, what was the third one?
Educational opportunities, wasn't it?
Yeah, okay, so, I would just, just to lower expectations a little.
Yeah.
Um, to accomplish all three of those things.
You can't.
And to do all the things that you guys just shared is, will not lower any costs for anybody.
No, but the state's lowering costs. They're giving us eight cents off.
I just, I'm just trying to be a little honest about.
We don't need to lower it.
Because what we talked about here is, is doing more, not less. Um, increasing opportunities, um, sharing resources, upgrading the capacity of all of our employees, having more transportation, not less, um, having a, where the kids go to school where they currently reside. So, I, I'm just, I think it's important that if those, if that's what you're shooting for, I can give you guys a system. It'll be, I'll be amazed if that's gonna save you money.
But we don't know that, because, you know, with sharing the resources, you know, there may be something that we're totally missing.
There may be, and I'm, I'm willing to dive in and give it a go. I just, I, I think I need to set expectations.
But I, I think we also set that at the last meeting, because we said, "These three things seem counter to each other. Two of them really mean you spend more money, and one of them says you wanna save money."
Yeah.
But again, I think, um, if we're very transparent, I've never, I think Wardsboro, I've been to their last two school meetings, although they're, they're a little bit different than Dover, I thought they were, um, I mean, you guys have a lot of really good support from your townspeople and your voters. Dover's, you know, we've had a lot of years, I mean, they, they, they gave us a urn or something we weren't even asking for, and.
Pottery.
Pottery wheel, and we got busing everywhere, and we got whatever, we've never been told no, except, you know, when they wanted the additional portable classrooms, and they gave us an addition instead. So, you know, I think that we're, I think the voters are okay, as long as we're saying, and we can show that this is gonna be better for the kids, and it's gonna give them better opportunity. And then we just have to, you know, make sure we do, do the right thing.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I mean, I, I'm excited to do this work. I just thought it was important.
Oh, and I am jealous of you, because I would love to be doing what you're doing.
One of the ones that didn't make the cut, that I talked about before, basically says everything you said, do all these things, and at the end, save us money. So, the fourteen.
But you really wanted to vote at that.
No, there's two votes.
Oh, two votes. I know, I was trying to keep it down to the key things, though.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, that's basically what we're saying, this summed it all up, I think. Do all those things, and then save us some money at the end.
Yeah, but that, that's also like Alison Warner, too. I mean, you know, triple everything that we do, put a teacher for every other student, and, you know, cut my taxes in half.
Yeah.
Three grades to a class.
Huh?
Three grades to a class. Go for it.
Or three classes to a grade, you know? Um, you know, the, the one good thing, and I've said this, and I'm not trying to blow smoke to anybody, but I feel fortunate that we have a really good superintendent. There's been some previous superintendents going way back that I would be like, I would be shooting myself if we were trying to do this. We got two great administrators in the buildings that are very energetic, you know, much, uh, young, energetic, and ready to kick some behinds.
They are.
We have some really great, we have some really great programs going on, and some great things going on in both schools. We've got, could you imagine being in a town where they voted your budget down five of the last seven years and trying to do this? You know, I, I think we're, we're a very fortunate group, and I, I think as long as we keep transparent, we have you guys giving us some input, so that, you know, public input is important. And I think, you know, I was always told, Carrie, you know, you're not having this conversation, is, "Don't be worried when nobody's in there. Be worried when a hundred people show up to your meeting, because you've done something wrong." So, um, you know, I think sometimes the lack of attendance is that they're okay with stuff, 'cause if there's something we really messed up on, they'd be here to let us know. And I think you've seen that, Rick, in Wardsboro before. We've definitely seen it in Dover, so. And I think, Bill, we, I, I'm really, I feel like we've done a lot tonight.
Oh, this was really, really productive.
So, closing remarks, Bill.
So, my closing remarks are, you guys are gonna need to build some very specific goals, of which you're going to measure progress against. Um, last time, I gave you all a packet. Okay? It had, it had the CIP from Dover, and the CIP from Wardsboro, and the CIP from WCSU. Um, I've got another document here that is taking the three major studies that we've done, the district management group study, the integrated field review, um, and then crystallizing down the CIP into actionable steps. So, your homework is to make sure that you guys read that stuff before you guys meet again. Um, I've provided two models of goals from different systems. Uh, they can be very, yeah, they can be very simple, and they can be very extensive. Um, just to give you an idea of what West River did, is they came up with, they had a work session like this, they came up with about eleven goals that they wanted to accomplish, and then they tasked me with taking those eleven and putting them into, uh, true categories, and coming up with examples of how they could be measured, because it was a better use of their time to worry about what the goals were, and then it was a better use of directing my time to go and find how to take those eleven and put them into maybe four or five categories, and then give examples back of measurements. I will be giving that back to them on April thirtieth, so that's the process that I'm doing with them, so I just wanted to let you, in all transparency, if that works for you, I'm happy to do that for you. But I just wanted you to be prepared the next time you guys get together, 'cause I won't be there to talk about goals.
Did you hand out Bill the CIP at the February vacation meeting?
Yeah, I also sent it digitally, but I can send it to you again.
If you could, yes, okay, thank you.
And also, Bill, you, you, I thought we were gonna get your curriculum person to go over the goal thing with us.
So, our curriculum person did the, uh, vision.
Vision, that's right.
So, we're gonna do the.
I cannot find the, for some reason. Oh, right here, right in Smart Home.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Carrie, do you need this, or? Oh, you got one for her?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I just have a copy, because this is really dense, so this gives you guys an idea of what's going on in the legislature.
Well, the CIP is part of this packet.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I have accessories of it.
I have some copies. Um, just to give you, this is the most recent one, it's really deep and dense. It's got a lot of moving parts, but there's only two to three weeks left. Um, one thing that's really interesting in there, goes back to you guys' conversation about pre-K, is if the bill that is currently written gets passed, it's gonna make a lot of sense to bring as many students internal for pre-K, because they're going to, they're gonna give you a point four-six, so essentially, you get ten thousand dollars per student, okay? Right now, you get point four-six if you offer ten hours of pre-K for three- or four-year-olds. If you offer thirty hours of pre-K, they're gonna give you a full ten thousand. And if you offer fifty hours, they're gonna give you one point three. So, that would mean a pre-K student would be worth thirteen thousand dollars. And those aren't arbitrary numbers, 'cause those are, as Matt presented to the Dover community when he was researching high-quality, those are the numbers that it takes if you're going to have a full-on system. So, just one, I'll, I'll keep you guys aware of all that kinda stuff. We have time to design our system to match whatever laws are passed in May, but that's a big one. That's a really big one. That, and the census bill for special education, looks like it's definitely gonna pass, and that's a big deal. So, on that sheet I gave you about the DMG report, we were one of the ten supervisory unions that got looked at. So, we're kind of a year ahead of the game of, when a model like that comes in, these are the things you need to do. And then Tammy's group in the NIC project are doing the actual work that is in the study. So, we're actually very lucky to be doing a lot of the work that a lot of people will be thinking about doing in a couple of years. And that's all I got.
So, are they also changing how you count pre-K kids? Aren't they not going to be coming to your?
So, um, the fourth part of that is that, yeah, if your kids do not come to your school, they're just gonna pay directly that thirty-two-hundred. So, right now, if you don't offer, Wardsboro doesn't offer three-year-old program, um, you're collecting forty-five-hundred bucks, and you're paying out thirty-two-hundred bucks. You're actually making money.
Right.
Um, that would no longer be a tax. You would no longer take the ATM, and the thirty-two-hundred would go directly to the private sector. So, that's why the questions, the conversation we had earlier will shift dramatically if a funding system like this comes in. It's the difference between, in the quick analysis, we have about forty-three-year-olds and forty-four-year-olds between the two districts, and that's about eighty students. And if they were counted at one point three, you're looking at a hundred ATM, and if they're counted at point four-six, that's about thirty-four ATM, so. Makes a big difference in the amount of, um, resources that would be coming into a unified district, so. We'll look at what the structure looks like and what the funding looks like.
Um, this was really good. So, yeah, is there anything on that that you, any clarification, or you'll let us know?
No, I can definitely start doing, uh, some pre-work. I'll probably have some clarifying questions.
Okay. Um, from the board, is there any, anything else that we need to let Bill know, because with what we've done today, or any other administrators? Any of you all good?
Yes. One thing, um, one of the things that you've said a number of times is that it's a whole new school district, new school, you can kinda design it however you want. Um, so, took us out there, um, an all-year program instead of, what's it, seven?
That is, that was something on one of those questions, wasn't it? To convert, you know, with the IB program.
That was me who said children should go to school all year round.
It's something that's.
There was a need is answered to a point.
Oh, okay.
Something that's being done in other countries and is very successful.
I thought that for a long time.
Well, what, do we look at, Bill, when you were here, in Dover, didn't we look at something where like you, you just, you get some extended holiday periods in between, but it's like you go to school for eight weeks and take two weeks off?
It was the ten-two model.
Was that, okay, that makes.
It's perfect sense to me.
'Cause we're, we're, there's like really good videos they saw on first round school board. The challenge was that we only controlled a K through six environment instead of a K through twelve. And we're not, we're doing the best job.
On over.
From training our kids for nineteen-fifties education than we ever had, you know? Because we're, we're still doing, I, I love that thing that we saw with Bill with the Sir Kenneth.
Ken Robinson?
Ken Robinson, you know, where, it's like the factory model, the bell rings, why does the bell ring? That was to get us all prepped for when we went to work in the factory, so we knew when to start and when to end. And, you know, we're all put in the egg crate, 'cause we're all created on this certain day, and then we keep our little egg crate as we go through, as we get ready to get into the trenches or into the, the factory or whatever. I mean, it's, it's, it's a whole different world. I mean, I'm wondering if in twenty-five years, you're gonna have buildings, you know, or if every child is just gonna be like hooked up with this thing on his head to the, to the teachers.
An implant.
Haven't you seen Ready Player One?
No.
Okay. It's out in the movie theater right now, man, that's the future.
Of course, when I was in fifth grade, I remember getting so excited when I went home to mom one day, 'cause, "My God, we're getting flying cars by the year two thousand." That was almost twenty years ago, and my car still doesn't fly. My other car used to, but I got trouble.
Can I have a confirmation on the dates for the next May meetings, please?
Seven to twenty-first, right. Thank you.
No holidays, did you fear you were good?
I'd give up.
Ramadan or something.
I don't think so.
No, okay.
Oh, wait, 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 there's something.
Ramadan is the fifteenth, isn't it?
It's the twenty-first, they're not meeting on the seventh, because it is May.
It's November.
Memorial Day is not.
Not the seventh. No, yours is May seventh, twenty-first.
Seven to twenty-one.
Seven to twenty.
Wardsboro meets on the second, 'cause it falls on.
Yeah, seven and twenty.
Okay.
The first falls on Tuesday.
Right, so it's not this coming Monday, it's Monday after in Wardsboro.
Got it, so I'll get that.
And then, Rick, I'll get together with you on the schedule, but we have next Monday then for our, get the agenda done.
Okay.
Okay. This was really good, guys.
Excellent.
And look at, we even get out at a reasonable hour. Carrie's probably gonna see her kids before they go to bed, and she's also fed, so.
That's right.
I have saved food. It's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, that, that's a grant who did that, you know?
Well, that's what it's for.
So, oh, uh, we're kind of a work-study, but if we're all set, let's adjourn, get out of here. Thank you, Mr. TV guy. Thank you, Peter.
Yep.